With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our December 20 meeting. Please note Mr. Hau Paska's absent. First item on our agenda is items from council.
I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year from myself and everybody up here, I'm sure. And also, I'd like to pull D three, just because I have a couple of questions on that.
Pull D three, okay. All right. And ditto on the Merry Christmas. Any, anything else from council? Okay, seeing none, citizens communication. If anyone would like to come forward and visit about anything at all, just come forward, say your name and address, and then five minutes limit, if you would. So now's the time to come on up. See Mr. Cantor getting up.
Yes, I'm going to run my big mouth.
It's okay.
How y'all doing this evening?
Good.
Merry Christmas to y'all. Good to see you again. Yeah, I had questions, questions and concerns about the food truck park ordinance that's being passed today, or not passed, or brought up in general. I feel like personally that it may be a little restrictive. I think it might hinder the industry here locally. I think it cuts out a lot of people that don't have the ability to pay for a lot of ground, grounds improvements, so to speak, i.e. concrete.
You're talking about the one for the food truck park?
Yes, the food, food truck park ordinance, sorry about that.
C one, I think, yeah.
So, yeah, I, from what I understand, the way that it works, there are, there are food trucks currently, they're considered their own commissary kitchen. Therefore, you can cater out of your commissary kitchen, which is a big part of the food truck business. As a matter of fact, my business went from 25% catering and 75% walk-up to now 75% catering, 25% walk-up. And I think that's kind of where the food truck industry is kind of at right now, for the most part, here locally. Well, when you, when you have to cater out of a commissary kitchen, it limits space and size. And that's, it's pretty difficult. It kind of takes a lot of people out of the game. So, that being said, centralized commissary kitchen at a food truck park would put a lot of those small individual businesses back in the game, where they can actually compete for that same catering business that only a few of the, the businesses here locally have commissary kitchens for currently. So, that being said, also, I feel as if, when you have to go in and you have to lay so much concrete and do the DOT improvements for the curb cuts and all that fun stuff, I think that, that's a huge monetary investment. And I don't think it's a good investment, to be perfectly honest, for anyone to go in there and build a food truck park, put all that money into improvements, and then expect a return any, into any time quickly. I think it's more of a, kind of a, a passion investment than, than an actual monetary investment kind of situation. So that, all that being said, I think, I think it just kind of restricts the, the business, or restricts the growth of the industry for a lot of small food truck vendors. I think that those, those people didn't have representation in all this. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Citizens communication still open. If anyone else wants to come forward, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll close citizens communication and move into our ordinances. We have, the first two are without public hearings.
Item C one is an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Victoria City Code to address food truck park regulations, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
We have motion and second, and I'm sure we have some discussion.
Yes.
Anybody want to go?
Just to be clear and make sure I'm following this correctly, because we're looking at two, we have two different agenda items, but this one talking about food truck parks, this is a location, it's, it's not like a strip mall or shopping center, but it kind of is. It's a location where food trucks could be parked. And that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about individual food trucks being limited and moving around the streets or anything like that. This is a completely different entity. I just want to make sure that, that I am seeing this correctly, and some of the, some of the concerns that were just raised made me want to make sure that I'm clear about that. And then I, I do have an amendment to make, and I can make that now if you, if you want. I would like to, for clarification, and so I move, well, that D seven, which is talking about connection to public water and sanitary water utilities that we add in by mobile food vendors, so that it would read connection to public water and sanitary sewer utilities by mobile food vendors is prohibited unless there is an approved central preparation facility on site.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so read number seven again how you wanted to read now.
Sorry. It says, D seven, connection to public water and sanitary sewer utilities by mobile food vendors is prohibited unless there is an approved central preparation facility on site. The discussion at the last meeting indicated that as long as there's an approved central preparation facility, then the connection to the water and sanitary sewer would go through the pipes that go through the kitchen, so that the grease trap would be, be utilized and things like that.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. You got, everybody got clarification on that? It's just a wording change. Are there any discussions on that motion to amend it any further? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion to amend, add that language, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, so that language is added. I kind of want to go back to your first question. I think you're asking, what constitutes a food truck park as opposed to one food truck? We had, we had this conversation last time. I'm looking around. I know some, some staff helped us with that, because it doesn't say a food truck, you know, two or more, or three or more. Is that kind of where your, your question? Okay.
Just sort of to, to make sure that, I'm seeing that this is, this is like a, a business that somebody could choose to create. Somebody could choose to say, I want to take this property that I own and develop it into a food truck park, and then make arrangements for food trucks to come in, something along those lines.
That's correct. That's why it's in the subdivision ordinance with mobile home parks and RV parks.
Okay. Okay. And with respect to the connecting to city utilities is a big key. Far as I can tell, under normal circumstances, that's, that's a big difference in a food truck park and an individual food truck somewhere. What circumstances can an individual food truck hook up to water and sewer? None, right? They cannot. In a food truck park, they can, if these other items, okay. So that's a big difference, right? Okay.
Basically, what we're doing is setting up regulations for whoever puts a park together. Not that we have a park, but this is for the future, whether it's an individual or if several food vendors get together and decide they want to do a park. Okay, so that's what the clarification that we need to have was, is it something that an individual or it has, that's why when he said the expense for them, well, is it really coming out of their expense, or is it somebody that's created a park and then invited the, the vendors, the truck vendors to come in? So therefore, the expense is not coming out of their pocket, it's the owner of the, of the park, let's say.
Well, from what I've read on the food truck parks, they would typically, a developer would come in and develop the piece of property, provide what's required in our ordinance, and then would lease that space
Right.
to a vendor for a month, something like that. And maybe with provisions to sublease it if you wanted to go out and cater, and someone else wanted to pull in his slot. But, yes, he would, the cost would be borne by the food truck vendor, mobile food truck vendor, in rent payments.
Right.
So is, is there a situation, and maybe staff can think about this, they may be able to answer, a food truck, there are food trucks now parked on a lot that's paved or a street, right on that same properties, a kitchen that they prepare? A restroom they can use. Can they just then satisfy this, where they can't get a CO and then hook up to our utilities? I guess they couldn't get a CO, though, because that's required?
Are you kind of talking about what happens over at
I know of a few.
Airline and Lorraine?
Um.
There you go, Town and Country, where they
Perhaps. I, I know they don't have a central prep facility. I know of one or two that are like on a, next to an old building, and it may have a kitchen in it, in a restroom. So, you know, and I'm not, I'm just curious. I don't know.
Like if you wanted to put
We'll probably face these things over the next year or two.
Put them in Walmart.
Yeah, and it, but they need that kitchen. They need a prep facility and
Walmart has it one.
With coolers and
Oh, yeah. But they got to provide electrical outlet for each pad, so they got to have to run electrical all the way out there.
Is that, okay, yeah, that's
Because it's like a manufactured home park.
Okay.
Not at all.
I see it as two different things that could happen. A individual mobile food vendor could park in front of Walmart with their permission and, you know, and be there. If we're talking about a mobile food truck being able to be there permanently, you know, or, you know, more of a, more than 24 hours, then, then there's going to have to be all these conditions in there. But you could have, you could have a site where, we've, we've had someone inquire about an old restaurant site and putting a couple of food trucks out there, and they could follow, be very easy to, to meet these standards by putting electrical out there, and, and if they choo, chose to let them connect to water and sewer, put those out there. Restrooms are there, the kitchen's there, and it'd be relatively easy to do it.
Got to have enough parking, or that might limit the number of food trucks.
Sure. And the one I'm thinking of, it would start, the mobile food trucks would wind up in the parking lot, so that does start limiting the number of them.
Right.
But the rest of the infrastructure is already there.
And the general question of why we do this, you know, I guess it's just to promote the safety of these, et cetera, et cetera, right? I mean, you're stopping, think, why are we even?
Yeah, why are we going through all this? I mean, time, talk and discuss and discuss over something that's still not happened. It's possible it will happen, but it hasn't happened yet.
Okay. Did you?
Yeah, my question is how restrictive is this financially? I think Mr. Cantor talked about it. I can see where a food park can, can pop up on a big box store, paved lot, or something of this nature, but to find an empty piece of property and turn it into a, a food park that, that possibly had a park in it, and, and things for kids, and, and music, and, and things that I think that we envisioned that a food park would be to, to advance, enhance our community, how restrictive is this, and how expensive would that be to have happen? That's
You're asking, are we really prohibiting it from taking place instead of helping it?
Correct. Well
I know it's not for us to do, but
I'd be a devil's advocate there. Go, go look into opening a restaurant and look at the cost there. You know, the grease trap is significant. Most food truck vendors are not, probably not familiar with what that cost is. I don't know, they might be. The parking requirements, et cetera, et cetera, they're significant. And those people put a significant investment in those facilities as well, which we have to respect, and they want other competitors to be, have a reasonable standards as well. You see what I'm getting at?
No, I get it.
The paving, now we changed that to concrete or asphalt. I guess, I don't know what's in between. Did we have some different language for that, too?
We, we amended the other ordinance, the regular food truck ordinance, to include the same language that was already here.
Okay, but it still just says concrete or asphalt?
That's correct.
Such a
Such a
Such a So, okay, very good point. So, you, you ask about fly ash, yeah. And that would be determined by the inspector on site?
Development services.
Development services. We would get those questions all the time.
Yeah.
The standard is concrete or asphalt. We have had people do concrete pavers, and there's some eco-brick kind of stuff that's probably more expensive than concrete or asphalt that I think has only been done in one place in town, but, so there's some options, but we've never considered fly ash, an acceptable material.
I, I agree with what you're saying, because I'm thinking commissary everything, but if you go to some of the Tifa regulations, it's already required. All these mobile food truck vendors are supposed to, by Texas standards, go to a commissary every night. This gives them the ability to go right there.
And on the paving, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that, you know, we've got vehicles, both cars that are visiting and the mobile food trucks, that are moving in and out, that are then driving onto our streets. And there's a reason that we have driveway ordinances, and there's a reason that we have paving site requirements for parking lots and for mobile home parks, for instance. And really, I see this along the same lines, and so I don't want to lose sight of what we're trying to do in terms of the roads that we're trying to protect as well.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good point.
Did you, when, we ran this by someone from the food truck group. They have a coalition?
We ran
Is that right?
We ran it.
They did look at this prior to our first reading?
We shared it with the folks that we had email addresses for
Okay.
and met with Mr. Robert Harris.
Robert, okay, okay. Okay. Do, did you want to do a third reading? Is there any reason to?
My questions, yeah, my questions have been answered.
Okay.
It's a big investment, but I think instead of being a single restaurant owner making that investment, the, the risk is whoever's making that investment can spread that risk between 10 sites or whatever, and try and recoup it through that rental.
Variance process applies here as well. If there's some reason that a, someone thinks that they have a site that's unique, that doesn't need something done or whatever, they can ask for variance, and I suspect this ordinance will come back. You know, I mean, I hope we get a food truck park. I hope someone creates something, and if there's something that needs to be changed, they might, we might be able to change it if needed. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, and we do have a motion and a second, as, as amended, and
Can I make a statement to Mrs. Scotts?
Counsel, well, citizens communications is closed, actually. Counsel, do y'all have
I wasn't aware of what she was going to say before that was closed. That's why I wanted to make a statement.
Okay.
That's okay.
No, we've closed citizens communication, I'm sorry, so. Okay, counsel, back to where we were on this. We have a motion and second. Y'all ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. C two.
C two is an ordinance amending Section 14-60 of the Victoria City Code to further clarify requirements related to insurance, relocation, and signage for mobile food vendors, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for enforcement, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I think this is just simplification of the ordinance.
I'd just like to ask something for clarification, because a minute ago, Mr. Mayfield was talking about mobile food trucks and made a comment about moving every 24 hours. But when we do this amendment, we're taking that requirement out.
It's in the Tifa regulation already.
They're still required to do that. It's just that the, we had a lot of confusion over when does my 24 hours start?
So it's
So it's, they have to move unless they have a comment.
Okay, I'm glad I got that clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Eyes have it. C three?
C three is a public hearing on the CDVG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the period from October 1st, 2015 to Sep- 20, September 30th, 2016.
So we have no vote associated with this?
That's correct.
Okay, so we won't need a motion or anything? This is, we'll open the public hearing on C three. If anyone would like to speak just to this one item, now would be the time to come forward. Okay, and seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing on C three. Counsel, counsel comments, or staff, anything?
Answer, any questions?
You did have already a, a public hearing for this presentation that, where somebody came out already or not? Or is this the first time?
This is the, this is the first time. We've had a public comment period where the documents have been available at the library and been online. We've been soliciting comments for the last 30 days, but today's the actual public hearing, tonight.
You also had it in that Victoria Advocate published, and this is a Victoria Advocate.
Yes, this has been in the Advocate.
Because I didn't get to really go digging through it. I just started it, and I said, well, I ran out of time. But I liked to look at this one real closely, and I just didn't have the time. But we, we're gonna, is this just to present it, to read it, and then we look at it again, or this is it?
No, this one doesn't have a formal approval. It's just an annual report. It's our end of the year report to HUD, so if you do have any comments, our plan, we have to turn this in to HUD before the 31st
Okay.
of December, so we'll be, if you
No, I would just
have some comments over the next couple of days.
If we had any reprogramming out of this funding, or did we use up everything? So I was looking at some of the stuff had balances, but I just didn't see what the whole balance was. Are we reprogramming anything into the 16, 17 years?
There was
$15,000, I think.
I don't have, when we, I don't have that in front of me.
But I'll look through
When we did, or if you go back and look at the action plan that was approved, that started October 1, there are some reprogram funds in there. It's more, I believe it's more than 15,000. I want to say it's probably more than 40.
You know, on the, the mortgage assistance, we still have a balance, so are we still going to be able to use that?
Those are still carryforward.
Yes, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So unless we said that we were reprogramming the balance, it's still in there. So mortgage assistance is one of those, demolition is typically one of those, where the balance just carries over until we expend all the funding.
Okay. Well, I'll call you.
Page two in that introduction talks about the numbers, but I looked at it fairly closely, and I just, I say that because I don't always have time to read the detail, but I just want to congratulate you. It's very well put together and very understandable, and I like particularly the emphasis on swan crossing and what we're doing over there, the housing initiatives, so, good job.
And speaking of swan crossing, at the moment, all of the lots are, are committed.
Awesome.
I say at the moment, they've submitted an offer, we don't have everything signed, sealed, and delivered, and houses under construction, and sometimes homeowners will, will back out at the last minute, but at the moment, everything is, is spoken for. So hopefully, when I'm back before you in the spring, I'll be able to tell you that there are, all the lots have homes under construction, and that we're, we're definitely at the end, so it's exciting.
And I wanted to congratulate you also on the Salvation Army. They added that cover.
Oh, yes, the pavilion.
We went to the open house, daughter was there, and it was very nice and very, you know, very well lit and everything. They even had ceiling fans out there, so that was nice.
We've made some, made some, some great investments in our public facilities, and Salvation Army is one of those that we've been doing a little bit every year or so, so it's looking good. Lots to be proud of.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to the one at the Women's Crisis Center that you're going to do over there.
Yes, that's under construction, so you can drive by and see that. That should be done in a few months as well.
Yeah, they were asking for, yeah, I remember going to that one, too.
Well, that's good.
Very good. Any more comments? Jan, did you have?
That was in
60.
I was, it was actually, yeah, I'll ask it now. There, some of the funds are used for them to do some construction of an office building, and it said in the report that then there would be an increase in the number of beds, but it seemed to me it was a relatively small number of increase in beds compared to the size of the construction. So could you explain what else is going on there?
Sure. Midcoast has, has consolidated some services. The, I guess, staff that's housed down here at 120 Main. So they're moving a couple of offices out of the facility and moving a couple of people, or a few people down from 120 Main, so that all the services are there on site. So that's, that's what's happening.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Right. It's not two 1900, two offices in a 1900 square foot building. There's more, more than that going in that, and that frees up those offices in the existing facility to be converted to bedrooms and expand their capacity.
And those bedrooms are within the existing facility,
Yes, ma'am.
which is the right place for them.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
And do, well, everything except D three?
Yep. There are six items remaining on the consent agenda tonight. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 6th, 2016. Second, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community development block grant programmatic agreement with Midcoast Family Services in the amount of $60,000 for a public facilities construction project to construct an additional standalone building and declaring an effective date. D four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an updated agreement with Verizon Networks related to the city's cellular data services purchased through the Texas Department of Information Resources, contract DIRTSO 3415, and declaring an effective date. The fifth is a resolution approving purchase of playground equipment important place fall zone surfaces for Will Rogers Park from Fun Abounds in the amount of $125,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. D six is a resolution awarding a bid for the 2016, 2017 Community Center Portico remodel project to R&amp;R Masonry Incorporated in the amount of $26,310, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. And D seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality $68,000, excuse me, $68,222.70 for the annual water system fee for the city's public water system and declaring an effective date.
I move, I move to adopt the consent agenda, minus D three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. They pass. D three.
D three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a bid for specific stop-loss insurance to HM Life Insurance Company in an estimated total specific premium of $530,800, approving the policy and declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, discussion.
Can you just explain what stop-loss insurance is? Because it covers all the employees, so I was trying to figure out what, is it in addition to our health insurance, or?
Yes, ma'am. The way I describe it to employees is it's an additional insurance within our self, it's really an insurance plan for our self-insured plan. So it helps the city us protect against catastrophic type claims that would maybe come up in our plan, that would meet that deductible of $175,000 or above.
Cindy.
Let me add just
Okay, please do.
a few more things. It's a safety net, you know, since we're self-insured, if we have a, a million dollar claim, we'll pay up to 175, and the insurance comes in and pays the rest of it, so it's, it's a safety net.
Kind of like a supplemental that you have for your Medicare?
Well, no, it's, it's really that additional insurance.
Yeah.
So we don't, we were not, we don't expose our health fund
Right.
to those catastrophic claims that could cost in excess of 175,000.
It's really an insurance plan for our self-insured plan, is basically what it is.
And we've carried a stop-loss since the 90s, 1990s on our plan.
Did we just get two different quotes? Is that what that is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We got a renewal quote from our current stop-loss carrier, and they went up on the rates, and then we also got an additional, and we chose to go with the, the other vendor because they kept our rates the same as they are currently this year.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, that's what my question was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and we have two resolutions.
Item E one is a resolution granting a variance to Section 21-82A1 and Section 21-82A2 of the Victoria City Code related to subdivision and development, which requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 50 feet for Tanglewood Plaza Re-subdivision Number Two owned by Marco A. Rodriguez and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, eyes have it. E two?
E two is a resolution approving the purchase of radios to be used by both the police and fire departments from Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $1,479,112.50, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second over there. Questions?
Couple of them.
Okay, I see the chief ready to answer.
Team effort here.
Yes, sir.
On these radios, I know that this is a, the contract says lease to purchase, so our lease date says it's going to be the final payment, so I'm looking at two dates. I'm looking at January the 1st, 2019, and since end date, January the 1st, 2020. I'm looking at January the 1st, 2019, and since end date, January the 1st, 2020. So till when are the, the warranties on these radios valid? Till 2020 or 2019? 2020 or 2019?
It's a five-year warranties on the radios themselves.
Five years? Okay. And it says that we purchase them at the end of the second payment, right? That's when they become ours?
We basically, what we did is we were afforded an opportunity to spread the payments out over two years at 0% interest, um, so instead of coming up with the 1.5 million to get the radios now, which we need, working it out with Motorola, we were able to, uh, work this, uh, taxable lease purchase to, to spread those two payments out at 0%, so we were able to-
When will you get the radios, chief?
We are going to get the radios probably into the month, beginning of January.
And, and that's when your warranty will start?
Yes. They, they start as soon as we get them.
Are we splitting this between two fiscal years?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Two budget years, I missed that.
Yes, ma'am, two budget years.
What's the expected life of, how long will you use these?
Anywhere between eight to 10 years, I believe, was the, the new life cycle.
Okay.
I'll hear about it when I walk back if that's wrong.
Yeah. Is this all of them? And I didn't, I didn't, it may be in here, and I apologize for not reading it, this part of it. This, all the whole setup, everybody?
Police and fire.
Okay.